To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Dave, there. Jody?
There.
Shane's here. Kayla's going in for Kevin. Kevin went on vacation. He left last night. May I motion to approve the previous minutes for the town?
I make a motion to approve the previous minutes for the town.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I motion to pay the vouchers for the town?
I make a motion to pay the vouchers for the town.
Seconded.
Aye.
I had a couple of questions though, but I don't see them on here. I know we are, um, the town's, uh, money is on a, a tight, tight because we're, we're doing the budget right now. And I did see where, um, the police department had taken their cars to get tinted windows. Has that been done recently? Or the, the vehicles have got blackout tint?
Not recently.
Not recently? Okay. I was just because it had come, I didn't know if I had, um, if it was like a, an annual report that I was looking at. Okay. I, I just, that's all I had. That's all, that's the only question I had about.
Under new business, our final budget hearing will be October twenty eighth at six o'clock. For the tax levy and the public is able to attend that. Also then establishing the town manager position ordinance. We kind of just looked through that ordinance. Jared wants to go through it before we do anything with the town manager. And update the IC code and everything in that. So that'll be something that we'll probably have, have a special meeting on next week.
Is the town invited to that meeting?
Yeah, there's a reason. Every special meeting, everyone invites me to that. Yep. And that's, that'd be for the town manager. Amendment to the.
Do you just table that issue?
Yeah, we'll just table that. Okay. Jay, you get done, Jared. Uh, ordinance establishing town fund twenty twenty two fifty eight, police fines and fees. Do you have that? Yeah. Whereas the town receives money in the form of the ordinance violations of permit fees that are accumulated from several, separate from other town funds. Now therefore be it ordained that the town council of the town of Westerhope, Indiana, that the town establishes the following account fund for police fines and permitting fees. Creations of Fund Twenty Twenty Two Fifty Eight Police Fines and Fees Fund. A new fund account for the receipt of the funds from traffic infractions, ordinance violations of permitting fees for disimbursement including but not limited to all lawful police operating expenses. This shall be a perpetual fund specifically for police fines and fees until terminated by the ordinance ordinance. The deposition of the remaining funds at all determined by the origin of Indiana co pursuant to the origin of the said funds used. Now therefore be resolved that the town council of Westerhope finds it necessary and in the best interest of the town of Westerhope to adopt that ordinance of establish Fund Twenty Two Fifty Eight Police Fines and Funds.
I have never, um, seen this, but I do believe we can establish that. We don't have a judicial system. I mean, if somebody wants to, um, disagree with, with the ticket or with the ordinance violation that they have, we have no way of them protesting it. It has to go through a court. Am I correct?
Yeah, I don't, we don't have an ordinance bureau. So, so I'm not familiar if that's something coming up from state board of the council or not, but I've not heard or seen that.
Have you heard of it?
You have to have a magistrate.
That's my understanding as well.
It does not have to be an attorney. I mean, the town clerk could be the appointed magistrate, but there has to be somebody that, like, uh, for instance, we talked about this several years ago, where if we do issue, like, we can't do anything on forty or one fifty, but local road stop signs, stuff like that could be fined to the town. But we would have to have a magistrate at least once a month for, for people to contest the citations.
And we have to have the ordinance violation.
And you have to have the ordinance before all that even starts to start that out.
All right, so we'll table that because I have everyone's here.
Where'd it come from, Shane? Whose idea is that?
I had to go on my, one, no, going on board. I haven't, I haven't received that, so.
They can't take care of what they got.
Yeah, I don't know where it's coming from. That's why, that's a bill. Have you ever seen it here?
I've not heard of it. Nobody's seen it, too.
You know, Kevin?
I am not familiar with it. I did not write it, so.
I'm making sure to table.
We talked about it.
We talked about it as. Ordinance two two five eight.
Nobody knows where it comes from?
Nobody.
Well, how do you end up the packet?
We can only assume.
Court press.
Who's not here? Nobody knows that he was not here.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, bye.
Open issues invoice that we mentioned at the last regular meeting that took place on September. Previous invoice was presented by New Focus HR. There's an outstanding amount that is owed in inflation for the employee handbook that is still pending review. Are the council members emotionally to approve paying the remaining amount? Don't you find we sit down? We don't take that year to sit down and get a final idea.
Yeah, last meeting I saw was just, uh, you guys needed to get together and decide if that's what you wanted to adopt or not, or make changes. Cause then that's when Kevin said that they could, they were wanting to come down here to pay them, but I don't think that's necessary.
Right. So I need a motion to table that.
I make a motion to table the. Employee handbook.
Shane, you guys got to talk up because we can't hear you. It's back here.
I made a motion for the, uh, to, uh, table the employee handbook.
Seconded.
I seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. I need a motion during the town meeting.
I made a motion during the town meeting.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We didn't ask the police for their.
No, haven't we?
Yes, you did. Asked it, yes.
It's on the second page.
May I motion to reopen the town?
Make a motion to reopen the town meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill, your police report.
Uh, nothing out of the ordinary. One good thing that I've noticed, and this is probably the first time ever that I can remember, we had one possession of meth charge for the whole month. I mean, normally we're at eight or nine or even double digits and we've only had one. So I don't know if things are getting better or if we're just having a slow month. Um, and everything else is usual. Uh, we did do traffic for the fire prevention parade and we're doing traffic tomorrow at six P M for the homecoming parade.
Okay, so town account has a total balance of six hundred fifty six thousand twenty one dollars and fifty cents.
Now I need a motion during the town meeting.
Make a motion during the town meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Need a call.
No, we didn't do Stephanie's report. The street report, Shane. I graded some alleys and I'm well aware there's plenty more to do. Um, cleared brush from the alleyways and I know there's more to do. And helped the water guys move, um, their stuff down to the shed. Put all them boxes into the, the garage, did manual re, well, did manual reach, changed transponders and meters. Um, mowed and weeded and, and the dumpster area. I've got, um, I cleaned that area out once and it is trashed egg in. And there's roaches all over it. So what am I supposed to do about that?
What's that?
What I just said.
Roaches?
In the trash that people keep.
I know. We, we need to get the word out that, um, they need to call and set up an appointment to meet somebody down at the dumpster and they do the unlock and please put your trash in the dumpster.
Put their trash in the dumpster.
They've just thrown it. They have said, what did they say Stephanie? That they thought it was formal. So they couldn't get it in to the dumpster. So they threw it. So, you know, if people aren't respectful of this, then, then we're going to have to eliminate the service, you know? It's just as simple as that. And then we'll go back to the ord, writing ordinance for trash in your yard. You know, we try to provide a service to, to veteran people so that you can keep your yard clean and all that. And then it gets, um, you know, it's, it's not used properly. People are so disrespectful.
And I hung Bainer's bird in the school.
And then on the road issue, Tommy just told us the health department tagged the house and not allowed to leave there or live there. And to us treated like three times by the workman. He says he's met with the workman plus the bug man. So.
On the worst of.
It's on the worst of.
Yeah, they go there from seven to seven. To clean. And we all deal with the bugs.
All right. Need to call a water workers meeting to order?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the minutes for water works.
I make a motion to approve those water works.
I seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to pay bills for the water works?
Make a motion to pay the bills for the water works.
Right, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Financial report, Karen?
Okay, the water account has a total of three hundred twenty five thousand five hundred forty one dollars and thirty cents.
All right. Any issues?
I do want, and then I also have to final reading for the, um, water.
Whereas the town of Westerhope Town Council has the authority to provide reasonable compensation for the Westerhope employees. And whereas the town of Westerhope Town has the authority to make amendments to the current salary order, provided that it does not exceed the budget amount. Whereas the town of Westerhope Town Council voted to amend the pay rate for the utility water operators position license. Whereas the current salary ordinance will be amended and reflect the new pay. Whereas the new pay was at twenty four dollars an hour will be twenty eight dollars an hour. And that will be better reflect the significance of the duties and responsibilities of the water operations operator. Now therefore it be resolved that the town council of Westerhope, Indiana finds it necessary to amend the twenty twenty five salary ordinance to reflect the rate of twenty eight per hour, two thousand two hundred and forty dollars biweekly and fifty eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars annually for the water operator position. This is a full type position with a licensed operator. I need a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty five dash ten dash fourteen.
I make a res, uh, I make a motion for resolution twenty twenty five dash ten dash fourteen WS.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, where is it?
This is the final waiting for the water.
Whereas based upon the report of the town council of Westerhope finds that the current rates and charges to the use of services rendered to the water works do not produce sufficient revenue pay all legal and necessary expenses incidents to the operating of such water works, including legal expenses, maintenance costs, operating charges, repairs, leases, rentals, interest and bond payments, as well as other financial obligations on the water works to provide a sinking fund and liquidations of the provide adequate funds to be based as working capital funds, making extensions and replacements to make payments in lieu of taxes and provide a reasonable return on the water works utility plan. Whereas based upon the report of, of the council of the current rates and charges of the water works as set forth in the ordinance number oh six dash thirteen dash twenty two adopted council on June thirteenth, twenty twenty two, do not produce the income sufficient to maintain the water works property in a sound and physical financial condition and render adequate sufficient funds. Whereas the difference is scheduled for the rates to be adopted hereby between outside and town rates and inside with town rates. The council has caused notice to the public hearing and the rates charges set forth here in the duty and the advertise of the mail and held in public hearing, their own, all pursuant of the acts. All ordinances and partial ordinances and all provisions of the town of Westerhope code in conflict hereby repealed. The water and charges herein set forth and amended, the rates and charges set forth in twenty twenty two ordinance shall likewise amend the corresponding rates and charges set forth by the town of Westerhope. If any section of the sent, sentence to provide of the ordinance or the application therefore to any person or circumstances shall be declared invalid. Such invalidity shall not reflect any of the part of the ordinance.
To me, that just doesn't, I mean, does it? It didn't list any of those.
It's got a correct role, right?
Yeah.
Appendix A, adopted. At all the close of the third or the final public hearing, the board president will announce the adoption of the ordinance and the new water rates will become effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty three. The billing with the new rates will begin in November first, twenty twenty five. Propane increase to the monthly water services charge for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five through January first, twenty twenty seven. Waste water utility or the water utility is proposing a water service charge rate increase for all meter sizes, five eighths inch meter, quarter inch meter, one inch, inch and a quarter, and inch and a half to two inch to three inch to four inch meters due based on the rate illustrated below. And so current year twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven allowable gallons will change reducing the minimum allowable water per size illustrated.
I know it has today's date on it that we were supposed to adopt it, but that hasn't even been by our attorney. Our attorney hasn't even got a chance to look at it, so.
I don't remember it particularly. I think, I.
I know you had.
I know what I guess would say. As far as the rate increases, those were adopted from the.
That was.
From, from either right.
So that was, that was the main circumstance of.
Yeah.
Before is, you know what I mean? I'd like to.
That's what I was gonna say.
It hasn't been?
Yeah.
I mean, he read them. He read it.
Okay. Thinking, how come ordinance, how come he's bringing up June thirteenth, the last one was adopted? You know what I mean? I don't, that's.
May I motion to approve the number ten fourteen twenty five W R A?
I make a motion to approve the ten fourteen twenty twenty five W R A.
No.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we say anything about this yet or are you waiting on a certain time here?
No.
Hmm? Can we say anything about what you just did?
Um, open, open format. We're at the end.
Public forum.
Public forum, yeah.
Open issues.
Okay, it says none on here, but I do believe at the last special meeting I had tabled um, something in the water works and I would like to read on August fifth, uh, we received an email and I would like to read for the water operations. Our water operations beginning of the year balance was two hundred and thirty two thousand six hundred and forty eight one. Expenditures yearly revenue of eight hundred and thirty two thousand and fourteen fifty five versus expenditures for the same period. One million sixty eight thousand fifty six dollars and fifty six cents. Revenue minus, um, expenditures leaves a balance of minus two hundred and thirty six forty two and one cent. Adding in the beginning balance of two hundred and thirty two, six hundred and forty eight one leaves a negative yearly balance of three thousand four hundred and one dollars and twenty cents. The projection for the year illustrated by the clac, cash flow spreadsheet, personal services, other charges, contract work, debit services, uh, contr, contribute to the deflect. This will begin two thousand twenty six cash flow deflect. So he's, her, his projection is that we're going to start in the negative.
So how do you?
And we had tabled because I had made a motion that we eliminate a position in the clerk's office that gets paid for out of the water works. That brings up, um, you know, that, that will put water in our, and we had tabled it at the last special meeting.
But now what you think, what you just said? You just said three months ago, we only had two hundred and thirty thousand. You got a water operator, your balance this month is three hundred and twenty five thousand five hundred and forty one dollars. You've saved over forty some thousand in digs, repairs, um, you've saved a lot. You're sa, you're saving twenty four thousand dollars on license a year, um. Yeah, so that counter, it's what he's got.
And he's not here to explain. So like I said, that was the item that was tabled and it just, I showed my research. I did my research and, and you know, now we're going to have a rate increase. And so are we going to keep on stretching our, our resources until we're in the same shape we're in and have to do another? We've got, um, you know, we've got new services coming in too. We were, um, I did mention last night that, uh, the town is using the water works equipment and it's, you know, it wears and tears on it. So, you know, it's, it's only just a matter of time before we have to, um, replace, put this equipment in the shop. You know, things were out, things happen. Um, you know, so if we want to leave it there, then let's leave it there. We can wait till next month till he comes back. But we just keep putting it back and keep putting it back. You know, I not offer stretching our resources to the maps. That's what got us in this situation to begin with.
So we'll leave it there until he comes back next month, the next month's meeting. Uh, water report, Bill?
So for the month of September, we treated and pumped twelve million four hundred twenty one thousand gallons of water. Uh, our average chlorine residual was one point one part per million. Uh, fed a total of one thousand six hundred and forty four pounds of twelve mill percent hydrochloride for disinfection. Uh, we also fed six hundred eighty seven pounds of, of polyphosphate, um, with an average of point nine one part per million. We did sixty nine work orders completed. Uh, we're still changing meters, trying to get caught up on all the ones that haven't been reading for a long time. Uh, so we're gaining on that as well. And all of our bacterial samples passed, so we're good.
Thanks, Bill.
Need a motion during the water works meeting?
I make a motion during the water works meeting.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Need to call the waste water meeting to order. Need a motion to approve the previous minutes for waste water?
I make a motion to approve the previous minutes for waste water.
My seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to pay the vouchers for waste water?
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for waste water.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, financial report?
The waste water account has a total of one hundred forty five thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and eleven cents.
All right. New issues on our waste water? None? Open issues? None? Bill, your waste water report?
Um, we had five point nine five two million gallons coming into our plant. Um, I had to do a big shutdown on one of my digesters and had it completely hauled out in big trucks. So that took a lot out. So when I get ready to tell you what went out, it's not going to make sense because it's a lot lower. Um, five point five four one million gallons. But like I said, that's because I had big trucks hauling solids out. We were way too heavy in solids. I've been fighting this since I started. I finally, finally have my plant where it needs to be. So that's a huge, huge accomplishment. Um, we went on twenty four red light calls. I went on twenty four red light calls. Everything seems to be going okay. I'm doing okay, guys.
And Bill, need a motion? Motion to adjourn the waste water?
Make a motion to adjourn the waste water.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Need to call storm water meeting to order. Need a motion to approve the previous minutes for storm water?
Make a motion to approve the previous minutes for storm water.
Seconded.
Aye.
All those in favor? All right. Uh, financial report?
The storm water account has a balance of fifty seven thousand three hundred and eighty one dollars.
Need a motion to pay the vouchers for storm water?
Is there any, I think I got a list. Is that the only thing that comes out?
I make a motion. Wait, we're not doing this. Seconded. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, new issues? None? Open issues? None? Jared, do you have anything?
Um, other than I've been in contact with N dot and, um, Bill Smith, as well as the general counsel for N dot about the pump station, uh, that we met with Senator Good down there at four. So I, they've acknowledged at least, they've received our information. So we're hoping to get a table together to kind of address and see how we can manage, hopefully get that up to speed and then decide whether or not it's going to be other test bill or more. N dot keeps it.
We're making progress.
Respond to that.
Yes, yeah.
Need a motion during the storm water meeting?
Make a motion during the storm water.
My seconded.
All right, guys, before we get to public forum, um, this will probably be my last one. I asked President that. I will step back November, December is probably going to be my last one up here. I've dedicated a new job because I have a different company. Um, I'm not sure yet. I make the meetings. I'll stay on the council if not. And dedicate my time to the town. All right, public forum.
First of all, I have to say, I've came here several times and offered to help. I've came here openly and I've said, I can help. Let me help. I gave you suggestions and turned around and did exactly what I told you not to do. You gave me a raise and then raised my bill. I asked you to do this internally so you wouldn't raise our bill. Don't give me your lot. You can put numbers in front of me. I'm not done. You did that. No matter what you say, that's what you just did. Those two ladies didn't get a raise. You took money from ladies in the office. It's in the same department. That's what you did. I'm not okay with it. And I think everyone in here needs to know what they done. Vote. Done. Done. I can't help what, I can't help what, except help. I'm done. I'm just done.
Let them know, yeah, it was in the salary, we're just go to twenty-eight when we hired him. He wasn't hired, he was hired at twenty-four.
You can say whatever you wanna say, I don't care, and then I don't think anyone else is gonna get me, go ahead, you know, spend your life with me. All I know is, guy got a four dollar an hour raise, and my bill's raising, is that not what happened tonight, in the same meeting? We've talked about this, we've talked about this several times, I have volunteered, people in here have volunteered to sit down with all of you and try to look through this, I told you, you can do this internally, even begged you. This whole board to do this internally, and you refused to, what'd you do, exactly what I said, do not give someone a raise and raise my water bill, that's what you did. That's exactly what you did, no matter how you look at it, no matter how you wanna spin it, that's what happened. These two ladies, she's been here longer than most of these people, and I don't mean to point you out, Stephanie, but it's the truth, did you get a raise? Did you get a raise? Is that okay, is it cause of women, Jared, you know that ain't right, you know that ain't right.
We're paying, we're paying for his license and they got raised this time.
You, you know what, he came here, he came here voluntarily, raised some amount of money. You don't need to raise my bill to keep him here for a license, you had a license for years, you had three people in that department, you don't have. Now you're telling me you can't afford to not raise our bills, you had three people in that department, three people, she had at least two, and the sewer had three, you got one, right, one? And you're both doing this, but he's getting a four dollar an hour raise.
That's what turned, turned the wastewater, and Bill, you got two.
Now, now they are.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah. I'd like to start tonight by reminding us all why we're here, it's not for personal gain, it's not for the pride, it's not to win arguments, but to serve our community of Wester Hope. With honesty, responsibility, and forward vision. Recently, one of our town board members said something that really stuck with me last night. They said it was a lot easier when the cameras weren't on. Now that the cameras are on, we all have to be transparent. Go back to the YouTube video, look at it fourteen minutes and twenty seconds in. Well, that's, right there tells the whole story. It used to be easy when no one was watching. Was easy to cut deals in the dark, easy to hide mistakes, to pass the blame. And to let people Wester Hope pay the price for the decisions and the deception that has occurred in past town boards. It was easy when nobody demanded accountability, but this room right here shows me that people are demanding accountability, and they're demanding change. The cameras are on now, the people are watching, and the truth is coming to light, for far too long, this town has been run by people with personalities instead of priorities. By people more concerned with keeping control than keeping their word. We've seen the fallout of that kind of leadership with this organization, confusion, and a constant cycle of problems that we continue to be dealt. I know they're voting on it next week, two weeks, three weeks, whenever, but that's exactly why we need a town manager.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Not next year, not when it's convenient.
We'll have one next week, as soon as he gets through the thing.
I, I understand that's what you've said, but we've also seen in the past where we find out thirty minutes before that there's supposed to be a special meeting that has been postponed. I'm just speaking right now, yeah. The town manager position isn't about just hiring another person, it's about putting an end to backroom politics and bringing in professional, accountable, transparent leadership. Someone who answers the facts and not favors. And for me, that person's Tommy Roberts. Tommy is a part of the old guard that ran this town like a private club. He's not here to play games or bow to whoever yells the loudest, and I've been hearing quite a few people yelling pretty loud lately. He's here to serve, that's plain and simple, you see it when he's working off duty for the town, for the people, he does this all the time. He's already proven he can handle tough situations with integrity, and that he puts his community above not only his own well-being, but his family's well-being on a regular basis. If Tommy's put in that position, there won't be any confusion, in my opinion, about where the town stands. There won't be any secrets, there won't be anything about things being easier when no one's looking. Cause Tommy welcomes the cameras, he welcomes the sunlight, and I truly believe he is transparent, and that's what leadership is all about. Funding this town manager position is not a nice to have, it's a test of whether this board is serious about turning the corner, or if it wants to keep pretending that the same broken system will suddenly start working. Please, we're serious about earning back the trust that's been broken, and that trust has been broken for long before you all came in. This is the first step, fund that town manager position, put Tommy Robertson in it, and give him the power to do what needs to be done.
I would like to say I was the one who said it was easier when the cameras.
I know.
And what I meant, what I meant was, because my voice carries, I am as transparent as they come, and you should see, you should have seen what I did now. Does Mr. Goodall know that Good R know that you come all over and express, I, from what I understand, you're a police officer, and you're supposed to be an impartial party. And you come and you express your opinion, when you work in your profession, aren't you supposed to be impartial? And you have based, and you have said things just on one side of the story.
I'm coming in as a taxpaying citizen and a resident.
And you don't live in our town, do you, and, and you work for our issue, am I correct?
I have a, I have a Wester Hope address.
Yes, but you don't live inside our levy, you're not.
Now, once again, this is, this is showing that people can't come and speak for how they feel, or else you're gonna turn around and attack.
Exactly right, but I meant, I'm not attacking you, I'm just asking, that is your personal opinion, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And you based your personal opinion on not even know, knowing the whole story.
All right, that's, that's not.
And this is why people are afraid to come up and talk to you, no.
Why are you afraid, you got to speak your, your thing?
We, we can talk without arguing, we, we can do this together if our board members come and talks.
Can we?
Yes, great.
How is anybody supposed to believe what you say when two meetings ago, you said you weren't gonna leave this town board until everything was fixed? Now you've got a new position and you're backing out, and you're the only one on the board when all of this went down.
I'm not saying I will leave, I'm saying I'm able to make my meetings and I'll be here.
That's bullshit.
And why can't you stay as president?
That's bullshit.
Those two don't know anything.
I'm working on a brand name.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys were appointed, you weren't elected from town, you were appointed. If he steps down as president, how long is it gonna take for Joe Etlin to come in here and appoint somebody else?
Yeah.
That doesn't know anything.
They don't get advertised, I can tell you that.
You didn't get that, right?
Why doesn't it get advertised?
As a Democrat, it ain't us, we don't have to introduce the county.
How is it not you guys?
The county council, or the county, explain to the community.
Yeah, that's, that's still with, with the Democrat party, um and Joe Etlin's the head of the Democrat party's for tobacco town. So he would, he's the one responsible for caucusing the Democrats to, to appoint somebody in that position. But because everybody's, everybody's elected Democrat, well, these positions were initially elected Democrat, so then the Democrat caucuses, and they elect whoever they determine have that, so that's how it came.
So when is the next election to replace the board?
Twenty twenty seven.
The start in twenty, the elections.
This board will go out in December thirty-first, twenty twenty seven.
How many, can I ask, how many meetings can the board members miss and still, is there anything in writing that you can miss two or three and still get your?
I think it's like three in a row. They, they can't miss more than three in a row.
Right, and then if you're three in a row, you just have to leave.
Yeah, that's what I think, but I mean, I think that's certainly council.
For how many you can miss?
How many we need to council every?
I love this, consider, I never had the resources on particular issue, I can arrange the next meeting.
I make the regular council, or for killing, I can't remember any day, and make my special budget, it's not like that.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Tom.
I know, it's the first time I've been to one of these meetings, what it's called, but we last. But, I wanna say something, I know Tommy Roberts. And I wanna tell you, we need a godly man in here, and that's the only thing that's gonna help this, this town. He's honest, he's true, watch you sees what you get, I've known the kid for years, I love him dearly, he's a godly man. He will not let things go on that should not go on. And if we can get him in any, we was blessed to get him as a cop, I mean, that's a miracle right there. And to have him, to be in a place where he can do more, would be the wisest decision you all ever made, that's what I wanna say.
I have a question. Uh, can you explain why Tommy can't use the? In the loader and that other little thing?
The mini excavator?
Yes.
It was, we, we talked about that last night, the wear and tear on it, it is uh the waterworks, it is the waterworks piece of equipment, and they're getting ready to put in new surfaces. And he didn't, and it's, it's actually too small to be doing the jobs that they're doing, and, and with the wear and tear that they're using. When it comes time to put in the new services, is it gonna be operable, is it gonna be working to its capacity when he gets to use it?
Can you use the backhoe?
Yes, he can use the backhoe, but the way he explained when we had talked about it, he said the backhoe, it's like using your hand and not a thumb, that's how the backhoe is.
And it's too big, it's too big to get many of those places, but Matt, he stepped up and does some new stuff. But it's all right, so then to uh use it to tear the house down, but not clean it up.
That's right.
This, this is just came, this, this situation just came up, so I, we understand that there's two houses that are torn down that need to get cleaned up.
Matt is playing it.
We're gonna get him.
James was right behind him on the house. We're going, me and him and everybody else in that block, like we've been driving for years to get that place cleaned best, and it never had to get cleaned up.
I can light a match. I'll tell him, Bill.
Matt, it's Matt just all the way, block like that.
It was this morning. I need, I need another dumpster.
We'd just like to say thank you, thank you.
We're thankful for Tommy. Uh, our question is safety for kids for Halloween, uh when we have our thing at Rockies, you know, we started out a hundred kids, we got three hundred fifty last year, it's, it's. What our question is, would we be able to block off the block from the um, that, the alley to the light, can we block that off by between the church and Rockies or not?
Let's get with our police chief, Bill, and yes.
We just had kids lined up on the street last year, and we have some people that just drove.
We also try and get as many patrolmen out as possible for those two meetings.
Yeah, and I know, it's just last year we got a little panic, cause we couldn't watch, we couldn't get the kids along. It's only your two hours, it's gonna be a bit six. Little help, we're running just six to eight.
Six to eight, Bill, on the, on the thirtieth? On the thirtieth from six to eight.
We are giving dumpsters and everything, we are giving dumpsters and everything, but right now, I just lost Dave all night, Kevin just stepped off. I mean, we earned excuses, it's a job, dude. I give them dumpsters when I have them on my hands.
So when you can't?
When I'm looking to get out there, or not, with a full-time job, I raise kids my own time.
You don't have to do, Tommy's doing.
Why, why don't you harvest the money, that's what the money is in their board.
We did, and we just went through this last night, it was a big work challenge. You cannot do nothing outside of the tip district without tip money, we got a thirty-seven hundred dollar check that was roped, and you guys was in office.
We're talking, those places are deep, so.
That's not tip district, the House on Seventh is not tip district.
What have you done with the money?
It's still sender, you can't spend it unless it's in tip district, that's what you guys didn't realize, that's why I spent more to council things. From the Dollar Store to the Calisters, from National to Darn Road is where our money has to be spent. They hit right now on a thirty-seven hundred dollar check that's roped.
They're wondering why it was never needed over properly.
Roll up, roll up on David, what property is that?
Um, I'm not sure of the property number, it's right, right.
But no, the money.
Well, one of you have seen what's out there.
The, the money. I'm just saying, it's state work, that's, that's one question, I don't know. Finally, I asked, it was a.
All of it's never been on there. But it never went in the town, and then somehow somebody else does.
I have a question, I checked, you asked me about last night, it's thirty-seven hundred, what is it the state don't understand?
They don't know why it was roped to the lady and why the property was never needed over to the town or anything.
Well, it was given to the town, they're giving to the town.
The thing is, there's no supporting paperwork with the check that was written, so a voucher is.
What, what kind of paperwork are you looking for?
That was Wendy Christ.
I know there was one in the D.
Yeah, but it wasn't even in Wendy's name, so I don't even know how she sold it.
That's what I, I don't understand, that transaction, very. Is it in the general fund, is the redevelopment money going to the general fund of town?
No, the redevelopment money's got its own line item.
Well, there's eighty thousand dollars left in general, like redevelopment, so it's have.
There's a hundred ninety-two thousand, we're saying.
Because in all honesty, a lot of his debt just was given.
Did, did you ask the state what kind of paperwork they're looking for?
Kevin's dealing with that, he's a good treasurer.
I don't know what you, with these, since they got the D's.
They don't have the D's abstract, I don't know what they're looking for.
The people that are calling.
Any other questions? Need a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor, aye.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, sorry about that. I heard motion to adjourn meeting, and I was like, whoa, 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 anyway, so it was brought to my attention, right, I looked up the town Wester Hope website. And they have a local businesses section, right, and I got to reading that, and I'm representing doggy detail, right? They're not mentioned on that section at all, and I wanted to know why.
That website is something that was put into place by the previous girl in the office, um we just go and update things as needed, we have never really looked at the local business tab, but we can definitely put that on there.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, and if you guys have any suggestions on what else to put on the website, by all means, let me hear it.
And there's some other, and there's some other businesses I don't think is.
Yeah, and there might be some that were.
Right.
Active at the time, and then they're no longer here, so yeah, it definitely needs updated, and I'll mention that to one of the girls in the office.
Okay, that is something I would like to see.
Yeah, absolutely.